Good afternoon, everyone. It's Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. This is a school board briefing, and the time is 2:00 PM. Sergeant Arms, has the lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you. There are six items on today's agenda: 2024-25 Uniform Assessment Calendar, ESE, SP&amp;P briefing first reading, Board Advisory Committees, Agenda Review of the August 6th, 2024 Regular Agenda, Public Comment, and Good of the Order Other Business. Per Board Protocol, each Board Member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up, with a total of 10 minutes during discussion. So this afternoon, we're going to begin with the 2024-25 Uniform Assessment Calendar. Kim Sasse, Erin Groenfeld, and Clayton Simmons will be facilitating this discussion. Welcome this afternoon.
All right. Good afternoon, Board Members, Dr. Savage and Attorney Dupree Bruno. I'm Clayton Simmons, Executive Director for the Office of School Choice and Administration. I'm happy to have with me here today coordinators Erin Groenfeld and Kim Sasse, who will be presenting our annual assessment calendar for your review. Erin, take it away.
The slide that you're viewing right now shows the dates relative to preparing, presenting, and obtaining approval for the 24-25 Uniform Assessment Calendar. We worked with the curriculum team to compile and prepare the District Assessment Section of the calendar. The complete assessment calendar was presented to the Deputy Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer for review. We have provided the Uniform Assessment Calendar to you in draft form. On August 20th, the Uniform Assessment Calendar will be on the Board Action Meeting Agenda. If approved, the calendar will then be posted to the district website and provided to the Florida Department of Education by October 1st, per state statute.
The assessment calendar is provided to districts by the Department of Education. Sections 1 through 4 are pre-populated by the state with information regarding state assessments. Pre-populated materials include the glossary of terms, test, test type, and the purpose or use of tests. In Sections 3 and 4, tests are broken down into assessments for all students and assessments for select groups of students. Examples of assessments for all students would include the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking Progress Monitoring in Reading for grades kindergarten through 10, whereas an example of an assessment for select groups of students include retake opportunities for grades, for students in grades 11 and 12. Section 5 is completed detailing district assessments that are required for all schools. Examples of district-required assessments are benchmark readiness checks and exemplars. There is also a section of district-required assessments for select students. An example of this would include the Read 180 placement assessment. The last section of the Uniform Assessment Calendar requires districts to complete a table presented on the next slide containing the estimates of total testing time by grade level.
This slide shows the estimates of the average time for administering state-required assessments as well as our district assessments. State assessment times are provided to us by the state. District assessment times are provided to us by the Curriculum Department. We have included the change in minutes from the 23-24 year, school year, to the proposed 24-25 school year. Overall, we are testing less this school year. Some notable changes impacting total minutes this year are: the removal of comprehensive assessments in elementary and high school, limiting exemplars to no more than three per quarter, per subject area, change from the iReady diagnostic to the flexible iReady assessment for select students, which does reduce testing time. An addition of grade 6 benchmark readiness checks in science is noted, as now the curriculum is comprehensive. A school district may not schedule by grade level more than 5% of students' total school minutes in a year to administer state, standardized, or district assessments. And as indicated in the slide, we are below 5% in all grade levels.
On August 20th, the Uniform Assessment Calendar will be placed on the action meeting agenda for school board approval. The calendar includes a provision for the superintendent to make adjustments during the year as necessary. If approved, we will post on the district website for public view and submission to the Florida Department of Education.
All right. Thank you, Erin and Kim. I will now turn it over to Dr. Savage for Board Member questions.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Thank you, Ms. Sasse and Ms. Groenfeld. I really appreciate all of you taking the time today to present. I just want to add a little bit more to this. You know, when I met with all the leadership over, right before we kicked off the school year, I spent a little bit of time explaining the importance. Assessment is a critical aspect of how we inform our teaching-learning process. It's essential that we're always understanding what students can give evidence that they know and understand. You cannot teach, really, without informing that process. In fact, beginning with the end in mind, we often reverse-engineer our instruction so that students are able to demonstrate significant evidence that they actually can achieve the standards that we, and benchmarks that we have set forth for them. At the same time, it is a delicate balance between the time it takes to assess versus the time it takes to help students learn. And that is important, because presently, at times, it's very important as you look at every single assessment we give, whether it's a formalized assessment or a more informal assessment, it gives an opportunity for students to tell us what they know. And so it's essential that as we review and attempt to improve our academic outcomes, that we take the time needed to really deeply review every single assessment that we offer to our students throughout the year in every subject area. And the reason, of course, is because if there isn't a clear purpose of what we're assessing, what we're attempting to understand and get out of that moment in time, if we are giving students, for example, an assessment that we already likely know what the outcome will be, and that was time that could have been spent actually helping a student remediate a particular skill, that can take away from the limited time that you have to address that. So it's a very complicated and nuanced aspect of education. So this particular method that comes forward today at least allows us to meet the state requirement that shows the different assessments that we currently plan, but it still affords us the opportunity that if we identify specific assessment paths throughout the year, that we want to find an alternative method to do. Those would be the kinds of things I bring forward to the board as an understanding of, here's a specific assessment that we gave at one time, here's maybe something that we would recommend alternatively throughout this year. Because it is essential that our teachers and our families understand that every time we assess our students, it is with great purpose that we do so. And if that isn't happening, if we can't define what that purpose is, who the audience is, how we're going to utilize that information, then we still have more work to do. I will just say that last year, one of the things that I heard a significant amount were significant errors with many of our assessments. And I did not back away from sharing that feedback with our leadership so they were aware of it. Both as a parent, but also as a member of the community, I was routinely sent messages that showed our assessments, some of which my own students, my own children, took, that had, in some cases, a multiple choice, where multiple answers were in fact correct. And so just by which bubble a student picks, they will either get it marked wrong or correct, when in fact, both answers were correct, and it negatively impacts a student's grade. In some cases, those assessments were worth 80% of their grade. And so a single wrong answer psychologically starts to have an effect on students, because we have not necessarily always taken that time. And I just want you to be aware that the number of assessments that had these significant flaws numbered over 30. Over 30 different communications where that was shared with me. And so the, to say that there's an opportunity for improvement would be an understatement. But also, it goes beyond just errors. It really comes down to the scope of why we assess under what the circumstances were. We're trying to learn from it. How do students utilize that information? How do teachers utilize that information? Assessment is often misused. They say testing, we're over-testing. But the reality is, assessment is an integral part of the instructional process. So I look forward to future conversations in this respect that demonstrate the commitment we have to evidence-based instruction and evidence-based learning that assessment gives us, but also to ensure that the way we go about this work is commensurate with the level of professional expectations that we have for a system of our size, so we can really utilize this information properly. And respect the complexity of what it is right now in our classrooms, where teachers want every minute they can to help our kids. And if they're giving a test that they know is flawed, or that they know does not align with the standard or benchmark, that that is a problem for us to address. And it's something we willingly want to address, to ensure we have the highest possible results in our system. So I just felt that this is, while it's procedural in nature, it is something that does attempt to capture this at the high level. I wanted to connect it back to the critical work we have of trying to improve our outcomes, because at the end of the day, it is an essential aspect of that component as well. I stand ready then, based on my comments, but also just the specific things that are in front of you with this plan, to answer any questions you may have. Thank you again to the team.
Board Members, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Jordan?
I think that's great that we do these assessments, but as you said, for the outcomes. So as long as we are using those to work with the individual children that need that, I think that's great, because that's, that will always bring up our grades then for all of our children. And then on this one page, it says, I don't know if it's just a mistake or I'm just reading it wrong, October 1st, 2023, it's required to be submitted to Florida. It's...
I apologize. That is definitely a date error.
Okay. I thought it was just me. Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Ms. Petrika?
Thank you. If you could help me to understand the difference in the use of iReady. Before, it was all students. Now it's just some... Talk to me, please, if you could.
That is a district assessment, so we will let Dr. Shaker answer that.
Do you want me to say that all over again? Essentially, middle school will not take, will not use the iReady program at all anymore. It'll be primarily an elementary school program. The only students who will take a diagnostic for iReady are going to be incoming kindergartners, as well as students who are new to the district. If we do need to up the iReady path, if we do need to kind of adjust it, we have something called a flexible assessment now. iReady's trimmed it down for us. It's only about 30 minutes long, as opposed to what used to take 90 minutes, sometimes multiple days, to have our students get through the, excuse me, the iReady diagnostic. So it's a, it's a major ask that was coming from our teachers, to let the kiddos come onto the path, let our students come onto the path, and just use their path, instead of consistently trying to re-up the path or change the path.
I'm sorry. I don't understand.
Sorry.
I'm not a teacher, so help me. I'm a mom.
My apologies.
My kid's in second grade. They did iReady last year. What are they, what are they looking at next year?
So this year, since they could have used it all summer long, they'll start up right in the same place that they were. The way that iReady works is when we take an assessment, when we take a diagnostic, it will set them on a learning path. It'll say they know this, they're competent in this, now they have to master these skills. And what we used to do is, sometimes two or three times a year, we would have them retake that diagnostic to reset that learning path. The program doesn't necessarily need that to happen. It was more about fidelity to the, to the system, to what iReady expected. iReady's listened to us. They've shortened this flexible assessment that they can give. Most of our teachers are just going to follow the path that the kids are on. Does that make sense?
I don't understand the difference. I'm sorry. As a mom with a kid who's going into third grade, what's the difference between the testing they did last year on iReady and the testing they'll do this year on iReady?
So your third graders won't have to take an iReady diagnostic at the start of the year.
Okay.
They won't have, they're just going to use the same path that they had last year.
So will they test on iReady at all?
They will take a flexible assessment at the school's discretion, possibly in the middle of the year. It's a very short assessment. But that program's going to adjust and change as they're, they're completing it and as they're working on it anyways.
Okay. So iReady is used for more than just testing, then?
Yes. It's used for a number of different skills. And I apologize if we, we could probably do a presentation on iReady alone. It's a, it is an intervention program that teachers use. It is, it is a reading activity that they use, students. It's computer-based. It's all on there. They read articles. If they get the questions right, they move on. If they don't, they have to redo them. So teachers will use iReady. It's usually about 45 minutes a week, is the expectation. That's considered the ideal in order to get the most gain out of it. And it does provide us with a source of data when we're assessing how the students are progressing.
All right. So they are getting some feedback from the students' use of it each week to determine whether they're still on the same path?
Yes. They're going to get some feedback about how they're progressing in their path. How are, how are they advancing?
That's what I needed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions I can ask about iReady?
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, now that you opened that door.
It's good stuff, yeah.
So the iReady, so it's only 45 minutes. And the only reason I'm asking this is because I've had parents in the past who have said to me, when are, are our kids going to be learning from the, what is it, the anime or whatever the character is in the iReady versus a real person? Because they felt that their children were being placed in their classroom, and you open up and you turn on iReady, and that is an avatar. I don't know what they are. But they're teaching the child. And that's, that's been stated to me many, many times. So hearing that, that is like 45 minutes in a week, that's a good thing. So now I can let people know that it's only 45 minutes.
It is, it can be delicate. It can be, it can be overused. It can be underused. When it's used just at the right rate, it's in pretty good shape.
Dr. Savage, you want to?
Yes, if I could just add a little bit. So it's important, though, and this goes back to the original, sorry, back to the original comment I was trying to make about the assessment being inter, it's a, the interplay between instruction assessment, iReady is an example, and I just don't want this to be lost on what Dr. Shaker just said. So while we're talking about a specific type of iReady assessment, iReady can be utilized as an intervention, because it's not just assessment only. It has the opportunity, to give you an example, within iReady, they'll have the ability to drill down to specific benchmarks or standards that students don't know, and it even goes to earlier grade levels. And that's what it taught, when he talks about that customized learning path, it's understanding what are the, the missing skills, the missing standards that students have not yet mastered in a given grade level. So if you're a fifth grader, you may very well be working on third grade or fourth grade benchmarks, because they have not mastered those things. And yet they are sitting in a fifth grade class. And that's when you, you hear the opportunity of it being used as an intervention, that's a potential use. And I say that because those are ways that folks use it. It also integrates within the teacher, the teacher has the ability to utilize resources in some cases, that the platform generates and says, well, if you're struggling in this particular third grade benchmark, we now have specific tools that you can utilize in a small group, or a student independently can work on to help them build their skill set, so they can move that. And it's really diagnostic in that way as well. So it's, it's not quite as simple as saying it's just an assessment. It's really understanding how you're utilizing that particular system to support student learning. This really speaks to just the assessment aspect of it, that additional information. And so I just want to be real clear, because it's, you know, if we say that they'll only do iReady, and yet you might have a person using iReady as an intervention, where it's, it's giving them the instruction, like the avatar you're mentioning, where they're getting an opportunity to try to learn from it and practice skills that they need to develop that aren't at that grade level yet, or even that are. That's the kind of thing. That's why it isn't just as simple as saying it was a test done in isolation. Some cases where students feel like they're, they're doing an assessment, in fact, they're engaging in some type of adaptive, you know, tool that is essentially helping them develop the skill set, like a Khan Academy or so forth. It's both simultaneously assessing them, but also providing instruction. So they can, and that's why I say they really are connected. It's just a matter of articulating how they're connected, how they're utilized for that individual student. So I just wanted to add that additional piece to it, because it's, again, very, very complex to do in this particular setting.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
I was asked this the other day, and I did not have an answer, so I'm going to ask you all. Students who struggle with the English language, I think we had about 20% of our students last, it was reported to us. How are they, you know, given these tests? Are they in foreign languages at all, or are they all in English?
The exact specifications of how we deal with translation in iReady, if it's okay, I would get back to you. I want to make sure that I answer the question correctly.
Okay.
I know we do have intensive reading programs that service our special language, our second language learners very, very well. Read 180 is one of those programs that just is incredibly effective with our second language learners. But let me get back to you about the specifics of just how we can modify that program for our second language learners.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just worry that maybe a child is actually much smarter than they're testing, but they just don't understand the test. I mean, I could see that happening, you know. And so anyway, I appreciate getting back. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will go ahead and make my comments, even though a lot were answered already as the PowerPoint went on, because I am, I am a teacher. And so I do understand quite a bit of this. I kind of wanted to chime in and see if I could help, but I won't. That's not my job. I, this tells me that you are, you really are listening to our educators and our administrators. Because since I've come on this board, in the first six weeks of school, that is what I hear the most of, the frustration of teachers wanting to like, get down and, and into curriculum, but the, the testing and holding that up, and holding it up. And, and you're right, it can take days to get through an entire classroom. If you can man, if you can imagine a brand, put yourself in a brand-new teacher, first year of kindergarten, with students who may have never even sat in front of a computer, just trying to learn who her, her or his students are for the year can be so frustrating. So I am so encouraged by knowing that you're not necessarily taking a step back from assessing, assessing, but you're evolving with, with the way education is moving. And as far as the avatar, you're right, Ms. Jordan. I've unfortunately even witnessed, you know, a computer sort of babysitting, you will, if you will, a classroom. Unfortunately, I think, I don't see it often, but, and a lot of times, that's because a teacher's trying to work one-on-one, and then, you know, without, without the necessary paraprofessional help. I mean, there's lots of reasons why I think that goes on. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that's the reason why that goes on. And I think that after hearing this and hearing Dr. Savage's comments, you're so right. Assessment is a tool so that we can build time for teachers to remediate students who need that. They, we need to build that into the curriculum calendar, I believe, so that teachers don't feel like, well, 80% of my class just didn't get it, but today is, you know, August 8th, and I am supposed to be on this chapter of this. So it sounds to me like you're really starting to listen to the needs and the frustrations. And quite frankly, the most important part is what the students need at that time. And we shouldn't be living and dying on the sword of one test for a child. We should be looking at the whole big picture. So those are my comments. Thank you so much for coming up, Dr. Shaker, and explaining. And thank you, team, for putting this together.
Dr. Savage?
Just to close now, in case there's any other questions, you know, the other thing we didn't mention was just the opportunity then to enrich. Some of what we, this, while this covers the basics of what we want to do, I would just say, we're not alone in Lee County with this struggle, with this struggle. It really is a struggle really everywhere. And so I think this is just going to be an evolving body of work as we continue to find what's the optimal way for us to get the evidence of learning that we need, both in terms of meeting the basic skills that students need to be, to be proficient learners, but also how to keep challenging our students in the applied sense, so they can do so much more than what some of these assessments capture, so we can really get to the higher level thinking that we really expect all of our students to know. So this is not going to be something we're going to fix just this year, and we're not alone in Lee County with this challenge. It is, and it's even more sophisticated now with the opportunities that artificial intelligence provides. I mean, I will just say, that is, you heard the data science. I want to connect this to the opportunity. This is one of the greatest pathways that we have to potentially do even more in this space. But we want to align it with best practice. space, but we want to align it with best practice, and so there's just such an opportunity here. This is really just the initial exposure to the unified, you know, form statewide assessment calendar that we have to submit, but it's, this is going to be an evolving body of work that we look forward to bringing this board, and even samples of the assessments and how we're altering our approach to reach all students, both our students who are currently struggling to reach the benchmarks, as well as students who are already exceeding it from day one. Because that's a fundamental question is, what happens on that first progress monitoring session when a student who's just starting a grade level is already scoring at a level four or five at the beginning of the year, for all the benchmarks that they're going to be assessed on throughout that year? In addition to students who come in exactly where you'd expect them to know, on content that they don't yet know, how are you meeting the needs of those two very different students in the same classroom, in all those different subject areas where that can vary? That's why it's so nuanced and complex, but it's an essential aspect of our evolution in education just in general, not just in Lee County. So thank you for indulging the extra time on this really important topic, and thank you all for your time presenting, in case there are any more board member questions. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great afternoon. Next, coming up to the podium is Teresa Bowen, to fill us in on ESE SPNP, facilitating this discussion. Thank you.
Superintendent Savage, Attorney de Poi Bruno. Today, we will be sharing some information about the ESE Policies and Procedures Document, informally known as the PNP. This document outlines specialized instruction and services to students who receive ESE services, or students who may be going through the MTSS process. This process is governed by statute and requires that we submit this document every three years to the state. Once approved, we are eligible to receive state and federal funding, and also becomes part of our application for funding through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The PNP is also, serves as a basis for identification, evaluation, eligibility, placement of students who receive exceptional education services, and it outlines the steps that our teams must go through to determine if a student is eligible. Most of the changes in the PNP are legislation, so what we are, we change, what the state has changed through legislation. One of the important parts to note is that the document does only open every three years. So what you're seeing today is a document that was last opened in 2021. So it's going to contain information from legislative updates all the way back to 2022. So what you'll see in that document are things you heard are not necessarily new, are things you haven't heard of several times. It's just that this is our opportunity to add those into the PNP. Again, because it's only open periodically, when people look at the document available to them, they might not see the most current legislation, but it is always the expectation that we adhere to the most current legislation, even if the PNP is not available for updating. So today, we've just provided some excerpts. So what you'll see is what you were provided in the PNP, and we're going to give a brief review of some of the policies and procedures that govern the work. And because this is a DOE document, this isn't something where we could change it or edit it, so you'll see that it doesn't have page numbers, and to review the information, you will actually have to navigate. So we have this part here, which if you open it, you'll see the same thing on your document. And in the top right-hand corner, we just put the term Crisis Intervention Plan. Any item you went to, you would put that into the search, and you would be brought to that. So that is the way to navigate the document. There isn't another way to go to different page numbers or different sections. And again, because this is a state document, we don't have the availability to edit it, so we use it as it is provided to us.
So what you'll see on this page is the way that we navigate through this document. So if we're looking for a specific item, we'll use the Ctrl+F key to find, and that will allow us to put in whatever term we're looking for. So if you wanted to look at initial evaluations, if you put those terms in there, then everywhere in the document that that pops up, and so it'll appear for that. So this document serves as to kind of memorialize all of the laws surrounding students with disabilities in schools. So on this first slide, I'm going to talk through the major changes to the document and how this occurs. So when they send us the document, the state has opened it up, and they have gone through, and they have made all of the legislative changes through that. So you'll find that it's in four parts, and I've just highlighted some of the big changes, things you might have heard about over the last few years. And the first part of the document really deals about restraint of students with disabilities. And so this document, and as you go through it, you'll see that it is, it looks like two different types of entries. So what you see on this page is actually what the state puts in, and this was an entry they added into legislation, the use of Crisis Intervention Plans surrounding restraint. Some of the other things that they did are on the next page, where it talks about the way that parents are notified about a restraint happening in schools. And so this type of entry is where, if you see in bold, the state has given us information and asked us a question, and then we are to type in the answer to that question, and this is what allows us to have some specific district policies. This document then goes back after, you know, they gave us a few weeks to go through this document and answer the questions. The state preapproves our answers and runs it through their teams, and then we get the document back because it is required that the board approves it after that. So that's where we are in this step, and this is another section in Part A, I mean, Part 1, that detailed some of those changes in the restraint area. So in the second, in the second piece of this, the second part, Part 2, that document in Part 2 contains a lot of the requirements for eligibility. So when I talk about eligibility, that's when we've received parent consent for an evaluation, and then it moves over into evaluation, and then it comes to the ESE team to determine eligibility. So that's where ESE begins, is that, that eligibility meeting. And so this piece governs what we're required to evaluate and how they're to determine eligibility. And so in this slide, I show you what they changed here, is many of you are familiar because you did have a hand in working with our legislature on this, in changing the requirements for developmental delay, to move from age 6 to age 9. And so that, so some of those areas of eligibility based off of legislation were updated in Part 2. Another large area in the change in Part 2 surrounded alternate assessments. The state outlined the changes for eligibility to give a student access to a modified curriculum and modified assessments. They asked for districts to identify data surrounding participation in this type of assessment. The federal government asks that we are looking at 1% of our students, and so they want us to, you know, report that data in this document as well. And as a side note, I'd just love to share with you, you'll get some more information about this, but we were just notified by the state that the district was 100% compliant with our audit in this area during the past school year, so that's some happy news. The next slide is going to share our Part 4, and so the big change in Part 4, because Part 4 really deals with how services are allocated and used in private schools, and this area of change really dealt with the dissolution of the McKay Scholarship, and it turned into the Family Empowerment Scholarship. They work a little bit differently, and there's some different requirements of those, but that's where all of those requirements are now sitting, is in this new document as well. So thank you for the opportunity to let us share the update of this document. At this time, are there any questions that we can field? Superintendent?
That might be. Okay, there we are, well, okay. Just really thanks again, both to Dr. Duncan, as well as to Ms. Bowen, just because this is a very difficult area within the district, because of the range that is covered with our exceptional student education services. It's okay, I cried, I really did. So what I wanted to draw your attention to, obviously, they presented some of the high points, but I would really encourage, not just from a board member standpoint, but really any time you receive questions, whether it's from parents, whether it's advocates or so forth, this document that is attached today, what it really does at a pretty excellent job is connecting, and you see that it's the, by having the state set up this type of template, that it ensures that districts, which were all beholden to the same rules and regulations, that it really describes in greater detail how each district conforms to those expectations, by laying out the specific statute, where, you know, the specific requirement is in place, as well as what our procedure is. So what you have within this comprehensive document that's attached to it, is really an opportunity, a one-stop shop, to really see how we attempt, as a district, to address that specific area of this very vast area of responsibility in the district. And so just a credit to the professionalism of this group, because it's really, it covers so much ground in our district, all of our schools, and some very unique cases. And a lot of times, when you're dealing with parents on the other end of it, it's very personal, because they have, their child is the most important thing in the whole world to them. And oftentimes, when they are receiving these specialized services, it's because they've encountered difficulty. And so it's very emotional, it's very difficult, and they want to ensure that the school district is doing everything that they were responsible to do. What this helps to do is address procedurally what that looks like, and so that families who want to know, "How, what should I do? What's the procedure? How many days do I have? What's..." All of that is laid out and addresses exactly where they can go to have that type of information. That's why the document is so comprehensive. So just really wanted to highlight the hard work of going in and populating that element, as well as knowing that because these exist in other districts, there's always that opportunity then, potentially, to learn best practices from others. If we find that, you know, our procedure that we're having difficulty, then it gives us that opportunity to look at the state level and say, "Maybe, are there procedures that we would want to look to revise if we're finding a particular component of this incredible breadth of service is a challenge for us?" But I also did not even hear about the audit result. So that was, was that a desktop audit, or was that an onsite audit?
It was not an onsite audit. It was, for many months throughout the year about alternate assessment, it is a new audit that they have begun. Since the changes in the legislation, they wanted to ensure that we are following that legislation, and, even though it wasn't in the SPNP, or the PNP, they've changed that name. So it was done both with, they have us send random, they'll pick random students, and they have us send in multiple areas of documentation, and it went over several months. I think it started in November and ended just a few months ago. So that is, it is good news, absolutely.
Thank you for all of our, I was sorry.
And we'll have some more specifics about that coming to you this week.
Yep.
But thank you so much for the initial good news. And at this point, I defer now for board member questions.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, congratulations on the audit. My question is, with the restraining, we have the same day that you have to inform the parents by email or by US Postal, which would not, absolutely not be the same day. So it just has to be stamped on the same day that it has been sent out?
Yes. So most of our administrators are doing that either by phone, there's absolute, like, contact with the parent, and a lot of times, if that has happened, a parent is actually coming onto campus, so you'll see that that documentation is then provided in person. It is not, however, ever given to go home with the student. That is, you won't see that, you know, a letter home, that doesn't happen. So it's either, has to be documented. So they will start by trying to get that parent on the phone. Their last resort is usually to stamp, get it stamped and sent in the mail, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that...
But it is a way for us to be compliant.
I'm sorry?
It is a way for us to be compliant, if we can't get ahold of that parent, to be able to have that same day in the mail.
Okay, because for me, you know, making sure that that takes place that same day and not the next day, finding out that something took place with your child, is really important. So thank you, I appreciate your answer.
Okay, just one quick question, just for basically clarification to those watching. The, can you talk just briefly how the McKay Scholarship obviously rolled into the Family Empowerment Act, but even though there's a voucher for all students, what about the students who fell under the McKay? How are they now differentiated from all the students that are receiving the voucher? Is that a, am I being clear?
I will attempt to answer. We don't, because we're not heavily involved in the scholarship process, they have the scholarship agencies that they employ to do that. We really don't have a whole lot to do with it, but the Family Empowerment Scholarship, there's a separate scholarship for unique abilities. So I think that's what you're talking about, is that's the differentiation, because there is the Family Empowerment Scholarship, but then they did differentiate for unique abilities as a second piece to that. So our students that used to receive McKay would then now be rolled into that unique ability section of Family Empowerment.
Thank you. I just, I knew that answer, but I wanted to make sure that the public would have an opportunity to hear that as well. Thank you so much. All right, have a great afternoon, thank you. We're going to move on to board advisory committees.
Madam Vice Chair, would you like me to?
Yes, I would love for you to, thank you so much.
So based on the last board conversation, we mentioned in the very next meeting that we put a section here to give the board an opportunity to discuss. You also did receive a motion form from one of your board members as well, also in the Board Weekly, provided board member information in this most recent Board Weekly, we provided just, at this time, what we were able to hold more recently in terms of different advisories for like-sized districts, as well as a prior document compiled a year prior that had the state of the Big Ten in those aspects as well. And so the opportunity, as the last meeting that the board convened about a week ago, we said that we would have this conversation today to have any pertinent discussion related to the particular motion that came forward, as well as any other dialogue around the commencing for this year in terms of the current policy, which would have those citizen advisory committees for our board advisories. And so I stand ready to answer any questions you may have, as well as any discussion that the board members wish to have on this topic.
All right, thank you, Dr. Savage. Would anyone like to bring up a board comment about the board advisory committees?
Well, I will. I think the board advisory committees have been in place for a long time. The district has changed in many ways since the committees were first set up. We are not getting the kind of citizen participation that I think the advisory committees warrant. So it's my belief that we need to reconfigure the board advisory committees to make them more responsive, maybe, to what the public is interested in, and more focused on what is the board's actual responsibility. For example, the board approves curriculum, but it doesn't really create curriculum. That's an administrative responsibility. So I look at that, and I think, "That's really a part of the strategic plan, which is responsible for articulating our goals, and the method by which we achieve those goals comes out of the strategic plan." I look at finance, most people don't care, don't even understand finance. I think what people want to talk about is the budget. I think people want to... I think people want to look at the budget. I think it should be a budget committee and not a finance committee. Looking at construction advisory. Construction advisory is completely populated by people who represent the trades, which is fine, except that we're doing a lot of property acquisition and building of schools, and we're not giving the public an opportunity to participate in the conversations about where these schools are located. And so I think, really, I think that construction should really be reconfigured as a planning committee with a construction responsibility. And again, planning is part of the district's, of the superintendent's responsibility. On the other hand, it is part of the strategic, it's one of the strategic goals of the board. So I think there is some relevance there. So I'm just looking at ways of trying to shrink, I think we can shrink the number of committees, and I think we can reconfigure them in a way that is more responsive to what community members are interested in and would participate in. And I think would be more, would provide really better, more substantive input to the school board. So those are my comments. That's why I'm planning to bring up the, make the motion tonight at the board's meeting. I think, given that we have, what, 20 people or so that we need for some of these committees, we can't operate, we can't operate with the few number of people we have. We have no applications. We've all been out there in the community, talking to people about belonging to these committees. There's no interest. I really think we have to, we need committees, we want input, but I think we have to think about, you know, where it should be. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Follow-up comments? Mr. Persons?
I agree pretty much with Ms. Morgan. I think shrinking the numbers but expanding the scope is what we're looking at here. And I haven't actually gone through all the others. We got some information on what other like-sized districts are doing and larger districts are doing. I think it's going to take a while to really get through this. I mean, we tried different things. I mean, we went from video to audio, thinking, because some people say, I just don't want to be on a committee and have my face out there in the public, you know, and then have people coming up to me. One thing I do want to mention, the one committee that seems to have a plethora of responses is the curriculum committee. But all the others, like you say, are very, we're very short on getting people.
Ms. Morgan, you want to follow up?
Yeah, if I may. I think that the public gets to participate in the selection of textbooks, and that's an opportunity to review all of the content that's being provided in the district. As much interest as there is in curriculum, I don't think it's, the response, I don't think the board should, how can I put this, should be taking direction from committees about curriculum. I think it should be going through the administration, and that if there is something in the curriculum that is not aligned with our strategic plan, then it needs to come up in that context. So I hear what you're saying. There is a lot of interest, but I'm not sure that it's serving the board well at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Through the chair, may I ask a question to Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
So your time on here, outside of ISOC, the statutory, have you, since you've been on the board, is there any committees that have been added? And if so, how did that happen?
No.
Okay.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Whoever, yes, audit was new, is new.
Okay. And how did that, for who's ever here, how did that process work to add that?
Well, we did that.
But I mean, was there anything in particular, I mean, besides discussion up here, I meant? Yeah, but I meant, as I'm figuring out how we figure these out for the future, that's what I'm kind of figuring out. What are we going to look at? What are we, you know, what are we going to talk about the community with? Whatever.
Ms. Patrico?
Yeah, may I suggest that it would be workshopped? And you just said to Ms. Morgan, in your time here, I thought you were going to say, respectfully, you don't have much time left, so why are you weighing in on this? Because that's kind of what I'm feeling. No, I'm being, I'm being, I'm totally being serious. I don't, I'm not sure it makes a ton of sense for you and me to be weighing in on what's going to happen with committees going forward for a decade. You know what I mean? Like, is this a conversation that should be had with the new board members? And I don't want to set a precedent where I continuously say, I'm not going to vote on that because I'm not going to be here in 10 years. But this is one that, to me, is really important. In, you know, you said things very nicely. I'm not going to be as nice. We are ignoring our committees at this point. They are bringing recommendations to the board, and the board's not even considering them. So to me, that's, that's something that you all need to consider going forward. If the board, if a committee is going to bring a recommendation to you, it's something that should be workshopped. And that's what I was going to recommend to you as a board. You workshop what are the issues where you, or what are the subject matters where you feel like you should be receiving feedback from the public in the form of a committee recommendation. One of the issues I've long had with our committees is the lack of requirement, requirement for expertise on the committees. So for example, not everyone's qualified to sit on a finance advisory committee. Not everybody's qualified to sit on a curriculum advisory committee. Everybody's qualified to sit on DAC if you're a member of the community. But there has been hesitation up to this point to bake qualifications into our policies. I believe the feedback that we get from our committees would be much higher level and much more significant and impactful if we baked qualifications into those committees. Those are my comments for now. Does that answer your question? How do you go about doing it? You workshop it. You sit down as a board, you have a workshop dedicated to committees, figure out which committees you want, what you want those committees to be doing, what kind of feedback you want them to be giving to you, and then you formalize it in policy.
Mr. Fisher, would you like to follow up?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, generally, I understood that. I didn't know if there's anything else that came in the process when you guys were figuring about that. What about, I don't think we're ignoring the committees, though. I mean, as I said, we bring it forward, we discuss things. Just because we don't particularly act on something doesn't, I don't believe we're ignoring them. So, I mean, even on SPA, I was able to see us at SPA. I get it confused still. You know, we brought things and had the discussion in the board, didn't mean there's necessarily would act on it, but things, as I said, administration did look at different things and get back to them, things like those, just because we don't specifically act on something. I don't think we're ignoring them. So for me, as a board member, I've enjoyed the committees. I really get a good feedback that I'm able to bring back to the board and get a better understanding, especially when we're dealing with strategic plans, though. So the other thing I was going to ask is, I mean, some committees we do have, we're pretty close. What about a compromise of the committees that look like that there's enough spots filled to continue with those and then kind of ice the other ones as we go through this process that we're not stopping completely? That's just, I'm going to throw that suggestion out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. I know we've had a lot of conversations regarding the committees, and what I see, I know DAC is always the largest one because they represent everyone in the Lee County, in the district. But the policies and for these committees, I think the problem that I have is like, and I think I asked this question of Dr. Savage, what, when did this, when did they all come to be? What was the purpose of them? Because I know when we go in, the very first meeting that you have, the attorney comes in, she tells them, you know, we're going to use Robert's Rules, we go through that, and then the committee decides. Now, these are the committees of the board, but the committees then decide what their agenda will be for the year and what they will be working on, with no input at all from what the board has decided collectively what we would like to see each committee work on. And if they're here to work for, to help the board, to be an advisory to the board, I would assume, I would believe, that the, what we would want them to work on should come from all of us as a collective board. So that way, when we're there and we're representing the board, we can bring that information back. But that has never happened since I've been on this board. I go in there and the first day, they are, you know, have their stickers, and I've sat on multiple committees, and they all have their agenda of what they're going to do for us versus us asking what we would like for them to do for the board or for the district as a whole. And to me, we can utilize the committees because they have a lot of good things to share with us, for us to bring back. But what is it that we need for them to assist us with? And I just believe that that's something that we should always, that should be on the forefront of the committees, if the committees are actually advisory committees to the board, if that makes sense, what I'm saying.
Any follow-up there?
To Ms. Jordan's point, actually, the policy does express that, that it is the, working through the superintendent, and superintendent brings it to the board. Here are some topics that I think the committee should be working on, and then that is taken to the committee so that the committee can actually be effective and provide some good feedback back to the board. So it is, it's baked into the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. It is. And I always used to have that with me when I went to every one of these committees, to remind them of that. But in saying that, that is not what has taken place thus far, since I have been here. I've never seen that happen, where we have had this conversation with the superintendent on what we would like to see, and then take that to them as the liaison and work from there. And even our, the district staff that, member that's there, you know, because they're at the mercy of everyone as well. So we just, to me, I think that we need to know what we're doing, be organized, so that way we can give direction. Thank you.
Ms. Patrico?
So I think ISOC is in a different policy, yeah?
Yes.
And Audit Committee is in a different policy. So those two, we've got to continue with those two, no matter what. In terms of, in response to your suggestion, Chair Fisher, I'd like to see us pause them all because reducing the number but increasing the scope could potentially impact the few that have enough people. And then what's their real function? What's their real goal? I don't, I don't love the idea of wasting staff time, not that it's necessarily wasting staff time, but it is wasting staff time if we don't have enough people who are serving on the committee, who are showing up to give recommendations to the board. So I'd like to see a wholesale pause and then, and again, I hate to put it off because you do get some good public feedback in these committees, no doubt, but DAC is phenomenal. I mean, in terms of the feedback that we're getting from DAC, we will continue to get feedback in that regard. DAC can talk about anything, absolutely anything. So you can always get that feedback there. But I would like to recommend a wholesale pause until you all can figure out how you want to move forward. That's my response.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Hi. It's got to be green, yeah. So my, I have a couple of notes, but, so I was asked about EDAC. I've been asked, like, do we even still have EDAC? People think that we don't. I'm like, yes, we do. So I think that's a whole nother piece. I think it's some, I understand and I hear what Ms. Patrico and Ms. Morgan are saying, but maybe I think we need to look at the policy again because I think before what this, the new members, you could be on more than one. We eliminated that, where they can't be on more than one, except if you could be on DAC and you could be on another one. So I think maybe we might have more participation if we allow that, maybe change the policy again. So I'm thinking we look at, as a board, look at the policies, or the policy for, I mean, advisory committees. That would be one of my recommendations. The other thing I had mentioned back, I don't even remember when, giving them an incentive, like, an athletic card, and maybe they would, that would, they would get in, be able to go to some more sporting events for, you know, for free, and just to, that would, you know, give them opportu, because some of these are elementary parents, so they don't always go to football games, but maybe they would go if it offset a little, the cost and, and just the opportunity to have that participation. And it was just a little incentive, like a little, you know, incentive, really. I mean, it's not, they may or may not use it, it would be their, at their discretion. But that was one of the things that I brought up. The other thing I would, I would go back to, I've had people, we've had emails regarding, going back to video recording versus the audio because of the situation that happened at curriculum. And I think if we had saw audio, it, I mean, we had saw video, we might have looked at it differently, but the audio, it didn't, it seemed fine. So that, that's a couple of things that I would like to see, we talk more about, you know, is allowing the participation to be more than one. I know you wanted, Ms. Patrico has talked about, and she's talked about this for a while, is narrowing the scope, but I think that's going to narrow the people from participating. And so I think, I mean, anybody can run for school board. I mean, how, so how, why are we going to just, you know, discriminate against someone being on an advisory board that wants to be involved in the schools? I think that participation is really vital and huge. The other thing that I, was brought up about the construction advisory going to, you know, more of a planning, but, I mean, and I, and I, you call it SPA, I still call it CSI. I feel like CSA is part of that as well. So I don't know how that, if that could be, you know, I feel like, you know, I think that could be also, you know, part of that, maybe. So I don't know. But that was just a couple of things I wrote. Thank you.
Ms. Patrico?
I just want to clarify, it's not discrimination to ask for qualifications for highly technical areas of education. I just, I needed to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Persons?
You know, the policy said we're supposed to meet and give them some direction. We haven't done that. I mean, no one gave, I'm on the Audit Committee, no one gave me any direction to give the Audit Committee. I mean, and that's a pretty easy one because we're understood, they meet with the auditor, RSM, and then they make recommendations, and then we decide what to be audited from there. But still, we should have probably talked about that a little bit more. So I think going forward, whatever direction we go, whatever committees we decide to keep and not keep or expand, we need to meet and give some direction so they know what to work on. I'm on the construction advisory committee, and like Ms. Jordan said, they said, we're going to talk about procurement this year. I mean, they decided that, we didn't, you know? And that may not have been what we wanted them to work on. It might have been, we wanted them to work on solar energy or something. I mean, it should come more from us than from them, you know, for advice. So that's all I wanted to put in there. We need to do our job better.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli, and then I'll make my comments.
So I would recommend, I agree with you. I would recommend that when we are selecting, at the process time when we're selecting, you know, getting the liaisons for the committee, selecting who goes on what, that at that time, we would work on an agenda for each of them at that very time. Because I, I know sometimes staff gives the direction and gives them the agenda and helps with that guidance on that, or the staff, the liaison for the district does that. So, and my committee. So if there's a clear board directive on each committee that gives an agenda, then that liaison would, the first meeting would, you know, talk about it, and then see if that's something they want to do and adapt and collaborate there, that way, would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Ms. Patrico?
Yeah, I think I asked, and maybe I didn't, Dr. Savage, were you able to guesstimate staff, put a dollar value to staff time allocated to this work?
Unfortunately, we have not prepared that yet, but it is, was a clear ask, and I think it's something that, you know, I can just innocently respond, it's a significant time investment, both for the facilitators as well as for additional. I mean, I will just say, we've had a lot of conversations at the administrative level of all the work that has to go into, not just facilitating, not just the technology support, not just the trying to attract and get, but also the presentations. not just the trying to attract and get, but also the presentations, that there's a significant amount of engagement, a lot of times with the same presenters having to go to multiple committees. And in some cases, you know, it's, it is a significant level of work to do all of it. And so I think, you know, just hearing the board's conversations so far, so far, I would say, having a clear understanding of roles and responsibilities, which we attempt to articulate every time they come together, is clarifying what's the role, that's why we go through the policy, that's why they read what the policy is to those members, that's why they get the training on, they are a sunshine group. Just to kind of highlight and connect it back to the current data we have, which is, and this is just as of, I think, today, Construction Advisory, you have nine vacant positions, only seven applicants. And again, the wondering is if you don't even have, that's assuming that every applicant would be able to add significant value to that contribution. If you have curriculum, by contrast, 10 vacant positions, but 24 applicants. But then it goes back to, I think, a conversation that multiple board members mentioned, which was, so even though we think of curriculum, anyone can do it. The reality is curriculum is an academic science that's really a specialized area of focus of the guaranteed viable curriculum that we have engaged. What are the credentials that folks have? Or is it a particular hot topic? Because what we found historically in the district, because these have been around for some time, is that sometimes an issue gets a person to the table. Once that issue either cools or it becomes less, or the committee is not empowered to work on that issue, they no longer show up to the committee and they no longer participate because the one issue that brought them to the table is not the issue that really represents a totality of scope. And so I think that's just another example. Equity diversity, for example, nine vacant positions, only four applicants. Finance advisory, eight vacant positions, only one applicant. And then the SPA, eight vacant, seven applicants. So again, that's assuming, and I haven't vetted any of the qualifications, and that's where we are today. So I think that's just important, that again, does not go into the Audit Committee, it does not go into ISOC. Those are very much separate and distinct from that. But just, I really appreciate hearing the board's discussion today, and of course, we have the policy. But we wanted, we wanted to honor that this was for board members to be able to get some of this preliminary conversation so that you have that, you're not just dependent on the one motion, this was in order of the board to have this discussion today. So we just wanted to bring this as well as, I'm happy to take additional direction from the board in terms of what can I do to facilitate your expectations being met related to this, whether it's recommending different pauses. I did want to highlight one element that's brought up, the DAC. So some districts, there are many, many districts that don't have anywhere close to the breadth of committee offerings that we have. And so in those, those districts, in some cases, they utilize their DAC, which the DAC is a fundamentally different type of advisory in the sense that it engages membership at every school. So every school has to submit one member from their SAC. And the SAC, by virtue of what it is, also is represented differently in that it represents parents, it can represent business owners, it can represent community leaders and community advocates, it can represent support staff, teachers, any of those different members, and in fact, even students. And so you can have this amalgam of really, across the entirety of the district, and they are empowered in many districts in this DAC structure to have subcommittees that focus on specific issues so they can be utilized ad hoc. So then you have particular issues that are elevated that the board wants feedback on and they want to get diverse representation, they can charge the DAC to do it. The other thing is the DAC operates, because it's also a communication vehicle with schools, so a decision can be reached at the board level that they want to get input from all the individual schools, that they have that built-in structure that they can go to those school SACs, which have to convene and keep, you know, record there as well. And then it can go back and forth. Issues can bubble up from the schools through the SAC and then come to DAC and then it gets to the board and they can go back down that way as well. The board can have specific issues. So there's just so much opportunity to go in whatever direction the board would like, but I stand ready to give you more information and to do more work to get you. I just know that timing-wise, we're in August, they were charged to start relatively soon. And so we wanted to make sure we had this at the first available opportunity for the board to contemplate what you'd like to do because we don't, we have to make a decision on that aspect coming up soon.
Ms. Patrica?
The reason, the reason why I asked about staff is because as you plan what the committee is going to talk about, I think it's important for staff liaison to have a voice in that so that their time is not wasted. So if the board wants to pursue something that is not permissible by law, for example, then we don't want to waste staff's time by pursuing that subject. That's the first piece. The second piece is staff often knows what's going to happen in February and they know that it's going to be an issue that is going to garner some attention from the community and would like to be able to give us the opportunity to get community feedback on that. So staff, at the beginning of the school year, can look out and see, this is the issue that will occur in December and this is the issue that will occur in March. And I recommend, I as a staff member, recommend the board that you discuss this with your committee. So to do it at the time when we're choosing our liaisons might not necessarily be the best route. It should be a workshop where your experts on your staff sit down with us, not that they tell us what to do, but they help guide us in the right direction because they're the professionals and you're a teacher, but I'm not, so I would need their help. You know what I mean? That's it. Thanks.
Just want to remind everybody, it's 3:10. Ms. Jordan?
I just want to, real quick, I just want to make sure that people understand that we're having this conversation, but we're not, it's not in any way of an intent to silence anyone. And I, and I just want to make sure, it's just us having a conversation about what we are looking at with this. And then with the, the people being on two boards, it became where, or two committees, it became the same voices throughout the district. So we needed to change, have different people on these committees so we have different voices from that. And I know I had asked Dr. Savage, the last meeting was, I think Dr. Browder brought these committees and why were these committees, because I think way before my time, but what was the purpose of the committees with respect to assisting the board? What was the purpose of that?
Yes, it predated me as well. Unfortunately, it was here before I was part of the central office administration, so they have been in existence for quite some time. We're still working to compile more information just so that we have anything else we can offer in terms of historical context, but definitely, we look forward to providing more information on that as well.
Ms. Giavennelli?
And I understand what you're saying and I would agree with some of it as well, but like, every year, we know we did, Code of Conduct comes up. That is one thing that we hear. I mean, we get, we get the presentation, they love hearing about it. Like I was on DAC, they loved hearing about it. I think EDAC likes to hear about it. So that's just an example of one, that we know that that's coming every year, Code of Conduct, that, that should just be in, you know, it changes and those changes need to have, you know, I think those are the, that's when the, the committees need to hear about it, is just like we do. I mean, that was just, that's an example of one thing, you know, the proximity planning, things that were occurring like that, that was another thing that came up in DAC and as well as other things, the changes there. And then transportation, everybody wants to hear about transportation because the, how the proximity plan affected that. And now people are talking about the time change. That, that's a whole nother thing that's coming up and I know we're all interested in that as well, in the time changing, school time changing. So that, I know we could come up with an agenda, whether that everybody adheres to it is a different, you know, each committee adheres to it, that's one thing, but that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I would just say in response to that, all of the examples are perfect DAC discussions. I mean, if they're held in DAC and it's all on the record, you don't need to have other committees to talk to people because it's all out there as a matter of record.
Ms. Dupay Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So just to make sure there's clarification from a statutory standpoint, there is, the SAC is statutorily required, 1,001.452. So every, the board actually is responsible to ensure that every school has a SAC and the, the process for approval, the members of the SAC and who can be on the SAC. The DAC is permissible. It's not statutorily required, but it's something that's permissible if the board chooses to have one.
Ms. Morgan?
Well, having heard that, then I'll just simply amend my motion to eliminate DAC. And I'll make my motion with respect to the other committees. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just be brief because there were lots of things said. So I agree with many things that were said through the comments. Dr. Savage, you took my thunder because, stole my thunder because I was going to talk about how many people applied because I asked that question and a breakdown was sent to me. So, because to your point, Ms. Morgan, and I think Ms. Giavennelli brought it up, the amount of people that apply for certain committees are more popular than other committees. I have, when I'm out, you know, talking and trying to get people to volunteer for this, there are definitely pushback from, well, I don't want to be on a so-and-so committee, but I'll do a this committee. So they're willing to give their time, but we hear it often, so I'm just, you know, don't shoot the messenger. I, I like a, sort of a hybrid model of what you're talking about, Ms. Morgan, when it comes to taking some of these committees and maybe making them one. For example, the, you brought up the Construction Committee and while there's lots of construction or people in that industry on this, it would be great to have, you know, realtors, commercial and residential, and I think that we need to think outside the box with who we are going to ask. I guess my question to you, if you don't mind, is when you're asking, when you're making this motion, are you asking to pause the committees for meeting? Are you asking to pause from applicants submitting and us pause on choosing? And I bring that up because in a couple of months, we're going to have some new board members and they are going to have the opportunity to choose. So I'm just asking for clarification for this evening.
So I was thinking primarily about the appointment process. I mean, the policy says that we've got to appoint people. If we don't appoint people, we have committees that won't have quarums. And so then the, then the question becomes, so what is their purpose? So I think the whole thing needs to be put in abeyance. And I, I think I put in my motion November 1st, but it certainly makes sense to put it off, you know, past the creation of the new board and let the new board sit down and, I mean, those people who have been campaigning, you know, they're, they're out there talking to community members every day. They may very well have opinions also about what needs to be done. But, no, my idea was to put the entire thing in abeyance. And as I said, with the exception, I would do it with the exception of DAC. So, hope that answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up.
Madam Chairman, the only other one that I can think of, and I have to have a little time to explore this, is we do have an agreement with the NAACP that's dated from 2018 that requires some community feedback. So I don't know the history if EDAC is tied into that agreement in any way, so I would have to explore that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Everybody in terms of representation on SACs and DACs is also contemplated by the statute, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
It is. So if you could look into whether that would satisfy whatever, I don't know what the wording was, but...
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll just follow up with, you're right, we have such a hard time meeting quorum and then we put this strain and stress on staff, the amount of time they spend preparing for this, and then just being here away from their families. You know, we're supposed to be a family-friendly organization and we're asking so much off-hours from our staff, so I keep that in mind every time I sit on one of these meetings. I'm like, gosh, they give up, they gave up dinner this evening for somebody's birthday or, and then who knows how many hours they gave up trying to put together a PowerPoint and then there's four people here, so now we can't even, you know, we can't even vote or discuss anything. So those are just the things that come to mind for me. I do, I am very confident that the situation that happened with the, the very stressful meeting, I'm very confident that that's not going to happen again. I feel like it was a heated moment, I think we all learned from it and I think those that were present learned from it. So I hold out hope that that's probably a one and only circumstance. So, you know, if, if we do choose to go towards, whether it be tonight or in November, to continuing these advisory committees, I think it's important that we do bring up the discussion that Ms. Giavennelli brought up, virtual versus audio. I know so many people have such a hard time, as I just said, getting here, getting down to the district to have, they want to help, they want to listen, they want to know what's going on, but we've got to somehow figure out how to make it convenient for our families to take part. Dr. Savage?
Yes, and I apologize, I failed to mention this. This is a critical, and I want to give, Dr. Bernier had one of his, I think, excellent contributions that he empowered us was when we got this thought exchange, the new application. One of the things that we've, we realize is that families, they are busy in getting here after work and that, but yet many of them, if you could make it easy for them, want to contribute, not just families, but you can get business owners. The neat thing about the thought exchange now is that it can be done remotely, you can open it up, very similar to a survey, but more engaging. It allows them, and it very much more aligns to current social media practice where you can rate things and provide unique insights that then get crowdsourced. It does it in a very efficient way and can get thousands of input, pieces of input, and then it utilizes artificial intelligence to make meaning of it, to analyze in a way that would take humans, you know, weeks and weeks to aggregate it. It does that now in seconds. And I've watched, I've never seen anything like it and it's a powerful new way. So it's, it wasn't just these, you know, the whole, what's the point of having the committees was often to get input from diverse stakeholder groups. As mentioned earlier, that when you have very slim representation, potentially even singular issue, you sometimes don't always get a full representation of a larger community. That's why I mentioned the DAC because DAC by design is harder to get people to take over a DAC by, because it's made up of individual SACs. And so you really, it compels a level of inertia that doesn't allow people to kind of hijack for a particular issue. It really, it forces that type of real commitment. But the neat thing about a thought exchange is that instantly you can get thousands of voices and you don't have to schedule, it can be done incredibly fast and easily and it's just a unique technology tool. And again, I credit Dr. Bernier for bringing, for allowing us to, because it's very reasonable as well. So very cheap way to get a lot of great insight.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Ms. Dupay Bruno, and then we're going to go to Ms. Patrica and then we're going to move on.
So the only other thing I was going to say with regards to DAC, that is held virtually. So that's, that's a big plus. And in the policy, the advisory committees can choose whether or not to be virtual or in-person.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I, I understand Ms. Morgan is going to be making a motion with the exception of DAC. And what about the date? Do you, does the board want to see a change to the date?
Yeah, my motion said November 1. Yeah. Can you afford to tell me?
And that's why I'm bringing it up, so you can make that the correct motion tonight.
Ms., yes. I, if I may, I have some thoughts based on the board's conversation that perhaps during, in between our meetings, if I can have a conversation with Ms. Morgan to tweak the motion, because based on what has been said, I think I have two thoughts that I would like to share with her.
So I believe Ms. Morgan's asking for input on the date to help amend her motion this evening. Mr. Fisher, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, and, am I trying to thoughtful for a second? I was going to say maybe January of 2025, December, as we know when we get in the board's going to be, you know, new people, so I know what they feel like, so it might be better if we're going to do it in January, would be my suggestion.
I agree with Mr. Fisher. I know it's your motion, but I agree with Mr. Fisher because I was thinking if a new board is formed, obviously people need time to fill out applications as well. Do you want to follow up?
Yeah, you all will have an organizational meeting and that's the perfect time to have that conversation and then, you know, yeah, and then you can start your second semester with your new program. So I'm just, I'm just going to put January. If you all accelerate it, that's fine. How's that? Everybody's okay with that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if, I'm going to move on. Usually there's an agenda review, but I don't believe we have any questions for this evening's action meeting?
That is correct. I did not receive any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is public comment. Attorney Dupay Bruno, would you please address public comment?
And there's no one here for public comment.
All right, we will move on to good of the order and I will start with Ms. Morgan.
Oh, well, you all know that I'm making, you all know I'm making the one motion this evening. I have read the attorney's comments about the superintendent's recommendations to the board. I would like to have a conversation about, I mean, frankly, we're going to have a transactional superintendent. And I, and I now understand that... And I now understand that there's not, there's not much opportunity for us to sort of put guardrails around that appointment process. Basically, superintendent, as I read the attorney Bruno's comments, superintendent can appoint the entire staff without ever having it go through HR. So how do we build in something, an expectation? Do we change the motion to say there is an expectation that the superintendent will consult with the HR chief prior to making recommendations to the board? Doesn't, it's not a firm and hard requirement that would violate the statute, but it would state some expectation on part of the board that there is engagement in the appointment process beyond simply the superintendent deciding that he's going, or she's going to pull somebody and put them in a position. So I would like to hear your thoughts about that, that other motion that I intended to make.
Any follow up? Mr. Persons?
Well, I understand your concern. You know, the thing that comes to my mind is, my predecessor used to say it all the time, that she was always told to stay in her lane, you know? And I think we need to stay in our lane in this particular case. I know, like, for instance, in other constitutional officers, clerk of court, the sheriff, anything else, I don't think there's any demand that for their higher administration that they go through, and I'm not sure of this, but I don't believe so, that they go through their HR. I think most of them will, you know, get applications and things on those lines. We have some policies in place for a lot of positions. But for the upper administrative, it's up to us to, one, we have to approve if it's brought to us, but the salary range is about the only thing we have to work on that. You know, if they want to bring in someone and pay him a whole lot more, then we need to really look at that closely. Because number one, their salary is tied to that, being $1 more or whatever than the highest-paid administrator. So I think we just sort of leave it as is, is how I would want to do it right now. It's just, that's one of the consequences of having an elected superintendent.
Yep. Ms. Jordan?
I would hope that the superintendent would utilize our HR. That's what they're there for. So, I mean, they have the talent to, and the knowledge of what would best be the criterias of what that person would need. So I wish we could put something in there to say, yes, this is, I'm not going to pick my best friend, or my husband's uncle, cousin, whatever, and, you know, we go through the procedures to hire, but we know that if there's a transfer, that they could just transfer them and move them right in, because it is part of the statute. So we found that out on this last hiring.
Yep.
That there was just, the board is just here, and we have to approve it regardless unless there's something terribly wrong. So I hear what you're saying.
Ms. Patrica?
So I agree with you. I have significant concerns going forward without requiring the professional expertise of HR in any recommendations made by the superintendent. I was not clear on how the board attorney's memo really applied to this situation, because nowhere do your changes suggest that the superintendent can't make the recommendation. And also, the two examples given were for the appointment and transfer of teachers, it had nothing to do with administrators. So I wasn't really clear on that. I don't need to be clear on that in order for me to say, I hear your concern, and I agree with your concern, but this is what the people voted for. The people voted for a politician making appointments at the highest levels of the organization, and that's what the community is going to have to deal with in terms of staying in our lane. I don't see the difference between an administrator and chief of HR, because whoever sits in that seat can appoint their political hack as the chief of HR, and now everything gets pushed through the chief of HR. So I don't know that it, I don't know that it solves the problem you're seeking to solve. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
That answers the question. I'll pull my, I won't make the motion.
Ms. Morgan, do you have anything else for good of the order?
Oh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Persons?
I'll save mine for later. Thank you. You're hired. If I go through HR, you're hired, to push my button. I know we're all, probably all going to be talking about start of school and all the different events and everything we've gone to, so we'll save that for later.
Ms. Jordan?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
My only comment is to congratulate Ms. Jordan and the Franklin Park community for the reopening of the school. I know how much that project meant to you, both personally and professionally, and I think that that's a reflection of how much it meant to that community. So when I congratulate you, I really am congratulating the whole community. But it feels good when professionally you see something come to fruition, and you fought so hard for it, you worked so hard for it, and you represented your community well. So congratulations.
You're welcome.
Ms. Giavonelli?
Yes, it's a beautiful school, actually. I got turned around in it, actually, from going in the front door. It was, it's interesting. I don't, the layout's interesting. But anyways, I don't have anything else. You know, we've been really busy, and we've got a lot of stuff going on with school starting, so it's going to, it's an exciting week, and next week's another exciting week with school starting on the 12th. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. I'll reserve my comments until tonight's action meeting.
The only thing I would say, board, is that there are policies that discuss specifically conflicts of interest when, from an employment standpoint. So, for example, the superintendent can't hire somebody that they supervise directly in their office. So I just wanted to point that out, that there are some safeguards in the policies.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, I have one fun item and then three items of business. So the first one, I just wanted to, because Ms. Jordan was already recognized in Franklin Park, and I am just so glad that we had that opportunity, it's a really special milestone. But I want to take a moment, probably just to acknowledge Ms. Morgan. I didn't, I failed to mention her in the remarks when we opened up the G Weaver site for the pre-K. But I wanted to kind of highlight Ms. Morgan's impact, because, you know, she's our longest-serving board member, and one of the things that, when I very first met her, and one of the first engagements that we had was a commitment to early learning. And the G Weaver was a physical manifestation of a huge body of work that, from the governance level, you know, one of our challenges, and I mentioned this for the whole community, but just it was important for us to know, our early learning results, when we first started looking at our kindergarten readiness, were some of the lowest in the state. We were the fourth from the bottom when we first pulled that data. And the data's always been that we had never looked at it. And so Ms. Morgan, long before that data was even public, long before we talked about it, she was talking about it. And so I just, I didn't mention her in my initial comments, but I did mention her afterwards, because looking at her after the fact, and I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged, you know, at your board level, sometimes board members have individual areas of real interest that you all come to the table with, or that you come to fall into that passion as you engage with people in the community. And I was not someone who really focused on early learning, was a secondary person in a lot of my background, but I became convinced, through my experience working as a Ked principal and then working across the country, that we can make a fundamental difference by investing in early learning. But the first voice I ever heard about it in Lee County was actually Ms. Morgan. So I just wanted to give you that special opportunity, like we acknowledged Ms. Jordan in that community. You have been talking about it for quite some time, and I just wanted to defer that moment of professional respect of what you did, because I remembered that from many, many years ago. So thank you for that engagement. Absolutely. And now I have just three items of business, one very, very brief. Procedurally, on the 21st, we are amending, we originally had a workshop and a briefing. What we've done is consolidate those meetings based on the nature of what those topics were. Some were very long. Evergreen is one of the topics. It's going to be, we're not always sure how long that would be, but we also want to include public comment. So what we're doing is, as we've discussed with the board before, doing a workshop briefing. So it's essentially taking those meetings together. What I needed to know from you all, that'll be a 1 o'clock start for that 21st meeting. You can obviously take a break after, you know, but rather than having two separate meetings with time-certain start and end, this gives you the flexibility to address that issue. So we'll have that for you. But I wanted to know who'd be the presiding officer for that particular day, because typically, Mr. Fisher presides over one, Ms. Langford Fleming over the other. Now, obviously, you do the action meetings, but for this particular combined meeting, who would like to be the presiding officer, so we can put that in our proper, meeting prep?
Would you like us to arm wrestle, or?
You'd win.
I have no problem running the briefing workshop. I have no problem running the briefing workshop, if that's...
I will defer to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
There we are.
Arm wrestle.
So thank you for handling that business item. I wanted to offer two more, just follow-ups on the most recent motions from the last board meeting. I just wanted to give you updates on both of those aspects that the board ordered direction on. So the first was related to the Bishop Vero. It was the movement to include Bishop Vero at a reasonable and appropriate level in all sports. The first follow-up action I wanted to give you is that we did begin some engagement to allow the bowling team, which had been omitted from the matrix, to be included in that. But I would say that is really just a symptom of a larger issue, and so I wanted to let you know that is going to be a bigger body of work to essentially, you know, bridge, I think, what are sides that are very far apart, and this did not happen just recently. This is something that's evolved over many, many years. And so it's a real opportunity. It's very unfortunate when difficult items raised to the board level, but it is the opportunity for us to really remind that, at the end of the day, whether it's private school, homeschool, charter school, virtual school, all of our students in Lee County are our future, and we, that's why I refer to them often as partners. It's so important that these partnerships, that we really embrace the opportunity in trying to see different vantage points. You know, when folks elected each of you to the board, many, many different folks from many different walks of life did it. And so some of those constituent groups speak to you, even if their children don't go to public school. They attend private schools, parochial schools, charter schools, homeschool. They're all still constituents in this community, and it's important that we recognize they move between them. They move between homeschool environments and private school environments. So it's my privilege really to help think through that partnership lens and represent the totality of the communities we engage in this difficult type of conversation, but it's important. So I just wanted to highlight that for you, that this was, I actually was very privileged to have a great conversation with our team to get the initial. I wanted to notice you all as board members, that this Friday, Mr. LaRosa's available to give you a lot of the rich historical understanding from that vantage point, but he clearly understood my expectations, and I think this is going to be a process. This is just kind of the, if the only takeaway you have is, well, they're back, they're bowling again, then we've all missed the point. The opportunity is to, is to really have a bridge and engagement with this particular private school, but really all of our schools, because we have the same types of challenges, even between schools, schools within our own district, that maybe don't want to play each other for lots of different history, coaches that have moved back and forth, athletic directors that have moved back and forth, lots and lots of challenges, horrific, unfortunate incidents that occur at sites that occur that create bad blood, and how those are remedied or not. Sports, I think, give us that opportunity to kind of build these bridges. I know it was transformative for my life, and I look forward to helping enable that piece. So I just wanted to give you that initial update. The last update I have for you is really to the calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, before we get into that one, if you had any...
Jordan, did you have a follow up?
Sure. So if I may, because I wanted to make sure that I had clarification on what that actually meant. So from my understanding, if the schools choose not to play, it's in their rights not to play a certain school, correct?
Yeah, that is my understanding. You were talking specifically of the bowling matrix.
I'm talking about any...
Anything.
Any sports, because when I went back and I started doing research, and I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. LaRosa already, but I just wanted to make sure that they have the rights, if they chose not to play, because finding out that some of our schools go to Georgia to play, because of what you just stated, some of the schools within our own district do not play one another, for whatever reason that may be, and that is more than 200 miles. So I just wanted to make sure that the understanding is, if the schools choose not, they have that option not to play if they choose not to do so.
That is correct. And without naming any specific school, that is the reason I mentioned when I said it earlier.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
I didn't have an opportunity to talk about this when we talked about it last week. I'd like to throw out the possibility of engaging in some kind of a sportsmanship agreement between competitors, between teams, between schools. For example, spitting at a principal would be unacceptable and could lead to whatever the consequence is. I don't know. But in order to play a Lee County school, you have to follow certain standards with regard to sportsmanship. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Ms. Giavonelli?
And I would completely support that, because I think this, the incident you mentioned was an opportunity to, a teaching moment that I think didn't happen for the students of Lee County and Vero. And so it's up to the adults to be, to help be that teaching, you know, and teach that, have that, be that teacher mentality and lead by example. And, you know, at the end of the day, as adults, we failed the students. And so I think that's, I think what you just mentioned is certainly, because it's all about sportsmanship and that. And so I wanted to bring up, reasonable and appropriate is the discretion of the principal or the athletic director, or just of the school individually? That was what I wanted to also ask.
To the superintendent?
Yes. To answer that question, reasonable, appropriate was included within the motion, and so that was the standard that I utilized with the athletic directors, was, you know, reasonable and appropriate, which, again, there is discretion allowed in there. And that's why I just also want to applaud, this is the type of ongoing engagement. How do you get the sportsmanship agreement? It's a great tangible example of it, because it is, it's not just between Bishop Vero. It truly is within our own schools, within, there's a lot of competition, and there's a real opportunity for leadership in this space, and I have very high expectations for the leaders, who are athletic directors, are coaches, and all schools. And that includes private schools, charter school, anyone who participates, there's a great opportunity. So I just really appreciate that opportunity to be involved in this, and it's, I'm excited for the work ahead, but we're not there yet. It's just I wanted to give you that immediate update of the bowling grid, because that was the, that was kind of the initial instance that promulgated this. Now that said, before I move on to the last item, is there any additional question on what I mentioned so far? Please.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. This is my last one. So my other thing is, we, as a district, have policies for bullying, harassment, and everything. So we have to make sure that if we are making sure that our people are doing it, we need, and that comes with the sportsmanship, we need to make sure that everyone, because it's far beyond just the, somebody being spat at. I mean, there's a lot of other things that have occurred, and we have to make sure that we are protecting our children, all of our kids, wherever they may be, whatever school they're in, as well as our staff. So I just thank you for, you know, working through this, and I just, because there was so much more that we did not know when we spoke on this the other day. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jordan. A lot I didn't know as well, so it was good to begin, and there's still more for me to know. The last one I have is probably the most significant in terms of just the substantive side of this, which is the calendar. The motion, just to remind the board, was move the superintendent convene the calendar committee to discuss the inclusion of Veterans Day for the 24-25 school year, and ensure that this is included in the calendar for all subsequent years. The rationale that was stated was also Veterans Day is a day we celebrate and honor all veterans of the uniformed services who have served or are still serving. Veterans Day is also a federal holiday that should be recognized perpetually. So I took that information. Now, obviously, I think you all are aware that, and we mentioned legally, that the rule had changed. Obviously, this is, we're in somewhat uncharted territory. So I just kind of wanted to respond that we did ask the calendar committee, now that, just to call this out, they, that was a bargained, that was a group that operated under collective bargaining previously. Now that that is considered legally no longer something that has to be collectively bargained, we wanted to be very clear, we didn't treat it like a committee that was subject, so we didn't, and obviously the short notice, we wanted, we didn't want to put them in a position where they're, we're forcing them to do something that would have been improper. So instead, this was open-ended input, for allow them to provide feedback. So just to summarize, the feedback that was provided, the committee did hear out, they dialogued through a number of the issues and considerations. Mr. Ron Iarussi, who's our new head for our labor relations facilitated, and our union membership, many folks did actually come. I actually have notes from that meeting, and I will pass these along to the board members, so I will be...
members. So, I will be emailing you basically who was in attendance, as well as the, the notes that Mr. Iarussi kept to try to memorialize some of that conversation. But just to kind of give you the gist, essentially, the committee, without taking any formal votes or straw polls or anything to try to compel action on it, stood by the committee's work, essentially saying that the Veterans Day, respectfully, that that is something that they do believe is recognized, but they recognize it educationally speaking, so that as districts to the north and south, there are a number of districts that represented Collier County, Charlotte being examples, that they don't, they also don't have Veterans Day off as a holiday, but they do utilize it as an opportunity to highlight, you know, veterans and support veterans while, while they're, they're there. That said, I recognize that from a letter of interpretation, that in one way, you might interpret that being, recognizing it is honoring it by educationally speaking, that doesn't necessarily mean you take, that the day is off. Knowing, though, the spirit of the, of the ask of how it was put, I wanted to make sure that I also provided other options if the board did not want to honor the committee's decision, recommendation that they made to the board, that the board formally adopted back in the wintertime, the previous time period. If the board still wanted, I wanted to at least elevate a few of these issues to your consideration. So, the first thing I wanted to do was just, essentially, an option A would be maintain exactly what, what the committee adopted and recognize it educationally speaking, so to give voice to service, to our veterans and so forth. Option B would essentially require some level of substitution, which essentially takes an existing holiday and then trades that out. Knowing, though, that before we get into that, I wanted to highlight, there's two kind of parameters you really want to look at when analyzing the calendar. The first is the student day, the student day, and that actually breaks into two components. The student days, which are required, 180 days for the year, as well as student minutes, which were, were our current schedule, conforms to both of those requirements. The secondary feature, and it has to be split, is how it impacts our employees, because it's different in terms of contractual relationship, in terms of which employees work, which ones don't. So, they impact those two groups differently. And so, any consideration you make, though, you have to account for both of them. So, let's back to the student day for a minute. In the first semester, there would be the potential opportunity, while there are many different days you could substitute, there are three days that potentially would be amenable if you were to do a clean swap of taking a day holiday for students and staff. The three days that, I'll work in reverse order, in December, the very first Monday of the winter break is the 23rd, a Monday, that would be a day that if you were to swap with that November date, that would be an opportunity that would impact all of our employees, because if all of our 255-day employees had Veterans Day off, this would impact our employees and students in the same way, and so it would basically be a clean swap. Another alternative was November 25th, which is the Monday of Thanksgiving week. That is another date that is a full week off for our students, as well as our instructional staff, not our 255-day employees, though. And so, if you were to take that day and swap that Veterans Day, then a consideration would be that would, and you'd have to contemplate, if you wanted all employees to have off, as opposed to presently the 255 days, you'd just have to be aware of that. But students, instructional staff, it would again be a clean swap on that standpoint. The third date that you potentially would have available to you is the, is a Thursday in October, the 3rd, which is presently Rosh Hashanah. So, Rosh Hashanah is one of the two Jewish holidays that often alternates in terms of that day off. Now, again, this is a day off for all of the school-based staff that are non-255-day, as well as for students, however, so it's not just for folks who practice Rosh Hashanah or who are, who are Jewish, who celebrate that holiday, but for all students, as well as the staff members who are on that work schedule, not 255-day employees. They don't, just like that first Monday in November, employees who are 255 do not have that day off unless they choose to take the day off. So, those are the three immediate first semester options. If instead, the board said, well, I don't really want to take any of those, none of those makes sense. You've got two Mondays, you've got this Rosh Hashanah date, we don't want to touch those. So, another option conceivably was to extend the first semester all the way through January to Monday, the 6th. If by extending that day to that day, having students come back to school that day, presently that is a professional duty day, if the professional duty day were to move to the 7th, then theoretically coming back from break, and, and this option also exists, I'm sorry, for the 3rd, which is a Friday in January, that you could cut that break, the winter break, early, instead of it being two full weeks, it could instead be nine days. So, students could be asked to come back on Friday, the 3rd, or Monday, the 6th, then followed by the professional duty day. What that would do is extend the first semester, so that you would now be bridging into January, but the, the key for the schools was to make sure that they really, for all intents and purposes, wrap the first semester, so exams all done before the break time. That's why they did it this way. They really wanted to ensure that. So, the different allowance, if you were to do a 3rd or a 6th return for students, is all exams would be expected to be completed prior to the end of December, but you'd have the opportunity for teachers to receive makeup work, missed exams, any of those natures, students who are going to be in high school, for example, have new second semester schedules, could receive those schedules a full day before. Then you'd have your professional duty day where students have off, but the staff still work, and then they come back on, in this case, either the 7th or the 8th, with their new schedule and so forth, and that would also allow you to do this. The challenge, of course, is by doing that method, you then defer the substitution date to a holiday in the second semester. So, in that case, you could pick either February 17th, which is President's Day, or April 21st, which is Easter Monday, okay, because we, that still retains Good Friday off or Easter Monday, no, President's Day. These are holidays that, similar to Rosh Hashanah and that Thanksgiving Day, our 255-day people still work those days. If they, they want, they can take them off with their leave, but for our school-based staff and for the students, they don't go to school those days. So, the 17th of February or the 21st of April would be substitution days you could utilize. And then, last but not least, if you were to do a substitution, you could also, the school year, instead of the last day for students being May 30th, it could instead be May, June 2nd, which is a Monday. So, instead of ending on a Friday in May, you could end the last student day on June the 2nd. So, again, you've now substituted, you've shuffled essentially your first semester holiday that you're looking to offset that in the second semester. So, now, instead of taking off any of these other days, President's Day, Easter Monday or so forth, you simply shift it to that second day, and then the teacher professional duty day would occur June 3rd. And so, that's the first consideration. I'm not going to get into the floating holiday, but the floating, just because that's a whole nother piece that, that different governmental entities and school districts contemplate in order to recognize particular, sometimes religious holidays, where not all folks take that day off, but, but people are given one day that they can get to choose when they take that. They can take a personal day, they can do those things, whether that's paid or unpaid. That's the way that some folks address religious holidays that we currently don't recognize. So, if a person, let's say, is Muslim, and they have a particular holiday that isn't recognized, they would have that ability to do that. And so, that's how you, that's how you still afford the opportunity for people to have particular areas they want to. That's a floating holiday, that's a separate consideration. The last thing I want to mention to you is the professional duty days. So, we have six professional duty days that require an early dismissal. These are two hours shaved off of the instructional schedule. Now, the PD days have absolutely no bearing on the day count that we operate off, the 180-day count. Where they do come into play potentially is if we were to experience a short, a missed, some missed time due to a unforeseen storm. So, if we have a storm that comes and we miss time, the minutes become an opportunity to catch up that time. So, a separate consideration is the, the potential of foregoing those professional early dismissal days, having, recouping essentially 12 additional hours of minutes that get put back into your instructional schedule, so that any days you miss are there. It's not, doesn't help you on your days, but it is something that should we have an active storm season and miss time, you have that ability to recoup that, either in part or not. So, I, I bring all this complexity to you purposefully, because this complexity that I'm articulating is precisely why there is a committee that does this work, and they do it through that bargain, because there's so many different interests, and that's really what the committee wanted me to be able to convey back, is that this is why they did the work, and it's why they didn't make an amendment to that piece and why they didn't push for a particular piece, because they had to sort through all these elements. But I wanted to make sure you knew that the spirit of the board's ask is understood and that there are justifiable ways, as I articulated, many different options, that if the board had a pleasure to, to do this, it is certainly possible administratively, because I owe you that, and I gave you that. And so, I wanted to give you that feedback, and then, obviously, because we impact all these things, I just wanted to give you every option we could. So, thank you for the opportunity to share the, the feedback on this so far, and stand ready for any last questions. That was my last item for you today.
Does anybody want to weigh in on Dr. Savage's recommendations? Ms. Patrica, and then Mr. Persson.
Yeah, I feel like we've kind of come full circle from Ms. Morgan's topic regarding advisory committees, because the advisory committee made a recommendation, and if we as a board want, want the advisory committee, the calendar committee, to function within certain parameters, we as a board direct the committee before the committee needs to put Veterans Day as a holiday. And so, I think that if this board wants to do that next time, that's what we do, but I think this time, it's too late. And isn't there, I don't know if this discussion came up last time, if I may, through the chair, to Dr. Savage, don't we have a very specific event at Barbara B. Mann that recognizes our veterans and patriotism in exchange for, it was done, the agreement was made with veterans in Lee County many, 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 many years ago, in exchange for having school on Veterans Day, we have this, what's it called?
With the ROTC?
No, it's not ROTC. It's, it's student art that has to do with patriotism. There is some JROTC. It's a beautiful event. It's amazing. And, and that was the agreement. We, it was a formal agreement with veterans in Lee County, where they said, yep, you can have school, because you're going to have this big event, and the whole community is going to get involved to recognize veterans in exchange. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Sadly, my brain is not what it used to be. It rings a bell, but I will need to get that information, get it back to you. So, I appreciate you raising it. It just, it kind of rings a bell, but I can't place it, and so I will have to defer. I'll get that feedback and bring it back to the board.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, yes, yeah. It totally rings a bell. I'm just, I'm sorry.
Those are my thoughts. Thank you. Mr. Persson?
Two things. One, I still definitely would like to see Veterans Day observed for sure, starting the next year. If the board would like to go this year, I would like to make a suggestion, we substitute the day after Easter, the Monday after Easter. That's not really a holiday, it's just a way to give a four-day weekend. So, that's, that's just my opinion. I would suggest that. All the other ones have a little more of a problem. I don't see any problem with extending the semester by one day. Actually, I think it sort of works out sort of nice to be able to come back, as you were saying, get some schedules and things done.
Thank you. Dr. Savage, can you just explain, because this is the question I get, I serve on that committee, not to mention, I get tons of emails and conversations about, why do we have so many severe weather makeup days throughout the first semester? Why can we not move those? I think I know the answer with the minutes, I completely understand that. Why can we not move those to the second semester towards the end of the year to try to get students out before Memorial Day? That is a topic of conversation I have often.
That's a great question, but first, it's pride and patriotism. That's, that's it. Yeah, I had help, folks give me the information. It was discontinued, I guess, a couple of years ago, so.
Because of COVID. But we could bring it back.
Pride and patriotism. That was it, though. That's the, thank you to those who sent it to, I had a number of folks send it to me, so thank you for that. See, it was post-COVID, that's why I couldn't remember. Yes, to answer the question, yeah, this was one of the first things that, you know, these PD days, because of the two hours. Unfortunately, they, they don't help, because they are counted as full days from the calendar piece, for, from 180 days of time, that's the criteria for the day count side of it. So, even if you take all those minutes, which equates to 12 hours, which is more than a day, it's almost two full days, almost, you can't utilize that. It has to be, it's a day. So, that's where these, these challenges are many, as you kind of tackle through this particular aspect of it, of how you go about figuring out how to do it. But, but as I did mention, you, it's not, if you were to forego, if you were to decide the 12 hours, it still has value in the sense, and we found this out the hard way in an FTE audit, where our makeup, we didn't, for some of our students, they didn't end up getting the, because we looked at just the calendar days, we didn't really look at the minutes, we ended up getting financially penalized from the state, respect to this. And so, it's not, the minutes are important, and because we're so tight on our calendar for those minutes, you lose those days. You have to really mine that very, very carefully. So, just wanted to bring that up as well, since that was part of the board discussion as well.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to hear that. As far as the calendar and Veterans Day, you know, I made the motion, I would love to see our veterans honored every year, and if it, if this puts too much strain and strife on our staff and our students, I completely understand that. I take full responsibility for voting to approve this back in January in the first place. So, had I let that slip on, on me, so I'll take, you know, my own vote under my responsibility. But I, I would really like the calendar committee to consider Veterans Day from here on out, and my hope is that this year, that veterans are recognized somehow, some way in every classroom and every school. Ms. Patrica, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so I made a mistake on calendar committee that made my own daughter come and give public comment when I was the board liaison to the calendar committee. Seriously, I approved a calendar that had semester midterms after the Christmas break, and she literally came and gave public comment and yelled at us for that. In, in terms of considering the Monday after Easter or some other day where families have likely already planned travel, that's, I mean, you say that, but I have family in the Northeast, and to me, that Monday after Easter for travel, after spending Easter with my family, that's, that's a big deal, and you know, we, we stress, we stress attendance, and we don't want parents taking their kids out of school for holidays, because we've changed the, the calendar. So, I appreciate your willingness to sort of step back and do this next year, because that would be what I would support.
And Ms. Morgan, before you go, I, you reminded me something, Ms. Patrica, that I had commented on in the calendar committee way back when they were even discussing it, and that was, have we thought about, this is just a recommendation, have we thought about where to place these hurricane makeup days? On days, speaking of absences, let's pull the top days that are called out in the year. And those of you that are in education world know that one of the top days called out, not just in education, but also throughout the country, is the day after the Super Bowl. I know that sounds insane, but think about how much money we spend on substitutes on days like that. So, maybe we go back and we pull data and statistics and see, what are the top days that are called out to save us money and, and whether it be transportation or substitutes? To me, that's just kind of a common sense thing, but it was, that's just a thought. I just wanted to, I've been meaning to say that, and I said it in the calendar committee, but not on the dais.
And I think that's brilliant. That, that should happen, really. And, and I do agree. I think we have to stick with the calendar. We have, but I think it's perfectly appropriate to go back and basically state the expectation on the part of the board is that Veterans Day will be protected going forward, so. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giovannielli?
So, just to piggyback off of that, the, the absenteeism, the day after Super Bowl, that was one of my notes, on the October 3rd, when, when there's a Thursday holiday in the middle of the week, does it become a four-day, what's Friday look like? Is it a four-day, is it a, like, so what's the data on that? Is that going to be a, like, I know my daughter would say, oh, that's a four-day weekend for, and you, and her kid, she'd pull her kids out and go somewhere to Disney World probably for four days. So, so that, I'm just curious about that, because I think that would be, you know, I'm just, I'm actually just curious. So, if, I know it's a, I know it's a Jewish holiday, but, you know, would we lose attendance on that day as well? And then.
Ms. Giovannielli, I just want to follow up with you on that, because I sat in and listened to this.
Okay.
I believe there was conversation, that did occur, about making that a four-day because of, you know, students are off, then students are back. The problem is, is where the end of the quarter fell.
Okay.
For the professional duty day. There was, there was an adult that did ask, can we make the fourth the professional duty day? And then, that was the reason behind not being able to do that. I just wanted you to know what we had discussed.
Thank you for that. And actually, what I, I'm not saying that make it a four-day week. I'm saying that how many kids do really come back to school is really the question, the the attendance that then. And I, I would agree, oh, I know what I was going to say. I would agree that we, we should, we probably should just calendar status quo, and then for the future. And I know Mr. Navarro would be very happy that we celebrated Veterans Day, so next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Savage, do you have anything else?
Well, just appreciate the direction so far, and I would just say, yeah, I was reminded, the committee did say they absolutely would be considering for the next year and so forth, Veterans Day honoring and so forth, that that will be a consideration moving forward, and they, I think they would appreciate that, that respect for the work that they did on that piece as well. I was not a part of that, but just the way it was relayed to me, it sounds like that would be something they, they do appreciate the board kind of honoring, because they did a lot of this, the same thing we were doing, but they did it over a period of really in-depth analysis, both the quarters and so forth. So thank you for that. I feel like I have the direction for now, but, but again, I want to make sure as a board, if you need anything, please direct accordingly, and I will continue to, to work at your, at your behest.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Do we not have to, do, was, was there not a, through the chair to Mr. Bree, Mr. Bree Bruno, I can't even say her name now, Kathy. Do we not have to read, take that motion back, or just-
If, if I could address it, so the motion was to direct, to explore what the options were for 2024, and the motion also included the second part that said to ensure that henceforth, starting in 2025, the Veterans Day will be considered.
Thanks, Ms. Jordan. All right. Tonight, we will have a board action meeting at 6:00 PM. I'm looking forward to the days where we get our students' performances back very soon. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 4:06 PM.